Hello, everyone. I'm the Honorable Ron Villanueva, the Executive Director of the Coastal Virginia Chamber of Commerce. As part of our civic engagement platform, we're joined with outstanding leaders, candidates who want to make a difference in their cities. Here today, we're joined with Brandon Hutchins, who is the at-large candidate, candidate for Virginia Beach City Council. I've known Brandon for many years. He's a military veteran, a small business owner, a husband, a father, and as you can see, a great dresser. Brandon, welcome to our show. Tell us a little bit about yourself and, you know, why you and I talked about, you know, getting involved and that's what you want to do. You want to get involved and make a difference.
Well, I appreciate you, appreciate you having me, Ron. And I think you kind of gave him a high level. You know me so well, but just to reiterate, you know, I'm a military veteran, served in the United States Navy for 11 years as a hospital corpsman, discharged in March of 2010 and started my healthcare career, currently employed by Anthem. We have raised three wonderful, amazing kids here in Virginia Beach, two of which have graduated from the Virginia Beach Public School System. One is a third-year biology major and my son is still sorting life out, but doing rather well. Our youngest, Braylon, is a ninth grader at Green Run Collegiate. My wife and I own a small, yeah, yeah.
Italians, baby.
Yeah, yeah, she loves it. So my wife and I are small business owners. We own a salon here in the area, rather close to municipal center. I'm actually sitting here right now while she's out there doing her thing. And ultimately, guys, I'm doing this because I feel like we need a good neighbor. You know, we've got enough politicians, we've got plenty of subject matter experts out on council, but also in the community. I hope to be able to leverage one selected November 3rd. But ultimately, I want to be there for you. I want you to know that you have bona fide representation that actually represents everyone in Virginia Beach from the oceanfront to Punggol. I want to be your guy. You can pick up the phone and call me. Don't hesitate to ask me anything. And hopefully, I can do the best job possible moving the city of Virginia Beach forward. It's about the future. It's not about us as individuals, it's about us collectively 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 years from now. And that's why I'm here.
Brandon, so good to talk to you. You remind me of, you know, when I first ran in 2002, I was full of energy, wanted to tackle a lot of the problems. And here in the city of Virginia Beach, as you know, we've overcome, you know, a couple of obstacles. One was the shooting last year and now with the COVID impacts. Could you walk us through, you know, what you're hearing on the streets? I mean, I know you're going to a lot of events, a lot of voters are meeting yet. You know, what are you hearing and why you think you can make a difference as a councilman here in Virginia Beach?
Well, you know, I, by no means will I pretend to know the ins and outs of the impacts of COVID. I think that's going to take some time to actually unpack. We probably won't see the full consequences of COVID for probably another couple of years. But what I can tell you is that as a, as a small business owner with my wife, it has been very, very hard for the small, for the small folks. And it's not just us, it's a lot of other business owners that I've spoken to. You know, just, just the resources that were supposedly available, you know, access to those resources. And I don't know that there was particularly a lack of awareness. I think it was just, I don't think a great job was done in terms of being able to communicate everything that was available or how to access those things. And I think we could have done a bit better with that hindsight. Hopefully, we're not faced with this sort of issue again. And I think that if, if issues are to arise over the next couple of years, hopefully, we're ready to address those. And once elected, I will do my best to make sure we are talking to any and everyone to, to do what we can to mitigate whatever may arise as a result.
Brandon, you and I talked, you've got a great small business in Virginia Beach. You've been a small business owner in Virginia Beach for quite some time. You know, a lot of folks don't realize how tough it is for small businesses, particularly now. You talked about COVID impact. Would you, as a councilman, be in favor of increased funding for small businesses like yours and, and others? And that's what we've heard, you know, from a lot of businesses who, who are members and they say, you know, Virginia Beach could use so much more, the state could do so much more, and we're not out of the woods yet.
Absolutely. You know, and I think I'd need to do a little bit more of a deep dive into this, but, you know, Virginia Beach is the largest city in Virginia. And we get, we've got a lot, we've got a tremendous amount of tourism that comes here. You would think that the state would, not, you know, show favoritism, but I guess help out a bit more.
No, you're absolutely right. You make a great point. Virginia Beach is one of the economic revenue generators for the entire state. People don't realize that.
Yeah, not just from a business standpoint, but from infrastructure in general. You know, I don't think that anyone in the state wants to see us fail. If anything, they need to help us succeed. And I think one of the things that we can do in terms of, of funding is kind of look at where some of this money in the budget is going now and see where we can kind of take some away from that and put it in other places to avoid raising the taxes a bit more, just like everyone else. I'm not a fan of tax increases, but I'm pretty sure, and I could be wrong, I'm going to need folks to keep me honest, but I'm pretty sure that there are funds that can be reallocated and better used elsewhere, specifically during this pandemic for small businesses.
Brandon Hutchins, you're for the people, by the people. That's one of your mantras. You talk, you know, when I ran, I ran about diversity as well. That's one of your, your platforms. Why is it important to have diversity on city council, particularly not only because of race, but you're also a military veteran?
Absolutely. And you're absolutely right, Ron. It goes a bit further than, than race. Again, Virginia Beach is the largest city in Virginia, make no mistake about it. And it's an 11, city council is an 11-member body. My, it's my belief, my personal belief, that the city council specifically are, should be a direct representation of the community itself, should reflect it. So this isn't just about race, it's, it's also about veterans, you know, and military and all that sort of stuff. We've got one veteran on council right now, and that currently is Mayor Bobby Dyer. It'd be nice to have some more, some more veterans in those cities, you know. And Virginia Beach, I think the DOD accounts roughly 40% of our revenue, which is phenomenal. And on a regional scale, I think we're somewhere around a $16.8 billion mark. So it's only right that we have some additional veteran representation on council, just to ensure that everybody is actually represented as they should be.
As a former corpsman and a military veteran, you and I talked about the new Veterans Care Center in Virginia Beach. That was one of the, that was one of the projects I worked on when I was in the General Assembly. But you talk about your healthcare background, you know, that's one area we could grow, right?
Absolutely, Ron. And I'll tell you, I've told some of my brothers and sisters in arms the same thing, you know, and I'm at, for transparency purposes, I'm at 60% disability. So I'm able to go and utilize the benefits at the VA. The problem that I have with that is that the VA hospital is across the tunnel. You know, when you're operating a business and you're, you know, you're working full-time, you've got a family and you reside in Virginia Beach or on the south side, it's hard to get over to the peninsula. So we need more resources on the side. So I'm glad you spearheaded that or instrumental in that. We need more of that. I'm going to be as, as involved as I possibly can when it comes to our military members and veterans. There are so many people out here that need assistance. They don't know where to go. And like me, they don't want to drive, you know, an hour and a half away if traffic is bad to go and get suit and fed. It's just not, it's not practical. We've got to do, we've got to do a bit better. So I appreciate you for doing that. Hopefully, we can add on to that and I'll do my part to make sure that we do do that.
Brandon Hutchins, a veteran who understands these healthcare issues. You know, you talk about, when you look at city of Virginia Beach, we've got a three-pronged economic development strategy, you know, it's tourism, agriculture, and you talked about defense. Where do you think we could pivot, you know, to help retain our current workforce and attract new ones? You know, you talked a little bit about, you know, how, you know, you're a tweener, you're not too old, you're not too young. So how, how do we combat against the brain drain here in Hampton Roads?
Well, I'll tell you, one of the things that are, that are, one of the issues pressing to me is, is the fact that our, our bright minds, our youth are leaving this area. I think we need to do more to ensure that we can not only retain our talent, but also attract new businesses. And that's, that's going to take a lot of conversation, but I think it's something that can be done. One of the things that we, that we have to address first and foremost is the infrastructure. No big businesses are going to want to come here if we can't get our infrastructure, our flood mitigation under control. And so while, while, you know, the 15-year stormwater plan is, is okay, and maybe I just don't know enough yet. In my mind, I think that we can do a bit better than that. I also think that we can do a bit, you know, a bit better with, with flood mitigation in general. I don't think that needs to take as long as this plan to take right now. I think there are other opportunities. It may involve lobbying the state some more. I don't have all the answers, but I'm pretty sure we've got enough subject matter experts in this area that we can bring to the table and sort this thing out faster than we have been.
So you talk about lobbying the state and federal government for, for more flooding mitigation. Obviously, the city, you know, is trying to combat that, you know, you and I talked about development, you know, and having developers pay for it. I mean, that's one way of doing it. And then Councilman Moss is organizing a bond referendum.
$400 million, correct?
So yes, would you support such an issue, a revenue referendum?
I'm going to have to, before I can give you a solid answer, I'm going to have to look into that a bit more. It sounds, it sounds like it could, could work out. We've got a decent bond rating. It could. I don't know the timeframe. Are you aware of how long it would take to get?
No, you're absolutely right. And that's a fair answer because, you know, it's appealing because you have like over a billion dollars worth of flood mitigation. How do you pay for these things? You know, the federal government, as you know, is wrecked with COVID, local and state budgets, you know, are wrecked. Yeah. So you got to figure out where to get the money somewhere. So that's a fair answer. And I think the citizens should appreciate that, you know, you don't have all the answers and that's a good one. I mean, most people, yes, no.
Right. One, one thing, one thing I've always said, Ron, is that, you know, I am by no means a, a career politician. What I can say is that this job was never intended for, for one person to do. Meaning, once we take this seat November 3rd, this seat won't belong to me. This seat literally belongs to all of Virginia Beach. So I'm going to be calling you, I'm going to be calling everybody, well, literally everyone. I'm going to be calling people to figure out what their thoughts on the various subjects before I make a decision on behalf of the people. This has never been about me and it won't be about me moving forward. This is much bigger, much, much bigger.
You know, you were telling me earlier, like you're on the stump right now and a lot of folks are coming up to you, congratulating you for running. What, why do you think they like you? I mean, what are some of the traits that you see as a good councilperson?
I think I'm relatable. I think that's something that we're currently lacking. And they see, and, and not to my, not to my, my opponents, it's not, I don't, I don't believe it's, it's my opponent's fault per se. You know, my opponent's been doing this for quite some time and sometimes we can get out of touch with, with, with the community, you know, and I think-
No, it's so, it's so very true. I served close to 16 years and it's tough, you know, staying on top of everybody and all the issues. So you're right.
Yeah, I, I won't deny, I will not, will not deny that. I think we have to be able to constantly remain active in the community. We got to be able to relate, you know. We're never too good to get into the weeds with folks. Sometimes you've got to go next door and help that, help that neighbor cut the tree down. And I think, you know, if we do it too long, sometimes we forget, you know, where we come from and where we need to go. And so I just, you know, I feel like I'm far more relatable to the entire community of Virginia Beach. I can have conversations with any and everyone, not afraid to walk anywhere, not afraid to have tough conversations. I build relationships, I mend relationships. I've been doing it since I joined the military in 1999 and I'm accustomed to quality service. I know what that looks like. I know what that feels like, more importantly. So I want to go ahead and give that back to Virginia Beach. I'm not done serving yet. So we're, we're going to give it all we have for the next four years.
Sounds like you're going to be a leader that listens. So like when you're a councilman, how are you going to stay in touch with your constituents?
Oh dude, I'm going to be out there, Ron. I'm going to be any and everywhere as much as I possibly can. Honestly, I still have a full-time job. Thankfully for me, leadership is, is on board with me and everything that I'm doing and they can appreciate that. But weekends are probably going to be heavy, heavy, you know, but I'm excited about that, you know. Campaigning, you know, you'll hear a lot of times politicians will say, oh, I enjoy, you know, campaigning and doing all these things. It's almost the exact opposite for me. I, I don't particularly like the camera. I don't, you know, everything that I do is pretty much behind the scenes and I enjoy doing it. Those are the things I like to do. In order to do them on a much larger scale, this is what I have to do first. And so, you know, while I may not enjoy this part, I know that what's to come post-November 3rd is going to be amazing. Nothing's shot amazing.
What do you think, when you describe Virginia Beach, what do you think this current city council is doing correctly and how you can improve on that?
What are they doing correctly? That's tough. That's a loaded question, Ron. What are they doing correctly?
Sounds like a Miss Universe question, right?
I think, yeah, you know, I think, we often hear people talk about, some of our more higher, higher-profile elected officials will say that, you know, Virginia Beach is diverse, which we are, inclusive, which we're not, and open for business, which we're not.
I like, I like what you say. Say, you say we're diverse, but we're not inclusive. And what was the other one you said?
And we're not completely open for business. Sometimes we are, sometimes we're not. It almost depends-
I have to agree with that.
It almost depends on who you know. That determines whether or not you're open for business or not. You know, Virginia Beach did a good thing in implementing that and doing that disparity study. That was fantastic. Now that we know that, now that we've identified the gaps, now is time to hone in on those gaps and move us forward, you know, to close those gaps and actually level the playing field. Let's stop talking about it. And everybody's familiar with the smokescreen, you know, saying those things is great. And it would be amazing if we actually were those things. But as culturally diverse as we are, we can do a lot better. And we're only, we're, we're growing in that sense. We're becoming more and more diverse by the day. While we're losing people, we still are growing. My diversity is, is growing wider. So there's more that we can do just to make sure that we're, we're being mindful of all the citizens in Virginia Beach.
Let's do a little, little grab bag. I'm going to mention some topics and, you know, just, you know, tell it, tell, tell it like it is, how you feel, so.
Yeah, you know, I don't have a problem doing that. That's easy.
All right, all right. Well, let's talk about technology here in our city. How can we improve on our technology?
Oh my goodness, that's a good one. We, my wife and I had a nightmare. Don't get mad at me, Health Department or whoever else. It almost seems like we're, we're afraid to move forward with technology. Case in point, my wife and I, we changed locations from the Loxbury Shopping Center to the Kellum Shops, which is-
So for full disclosure, we were neighbors, right?
Yes, 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 yes. We were neighbors once upon a time. Good times, good conversations. So upon relocating, there's a series of paperwork that you need to do for the various departments. I'm surprised at the fact that you can't complete these, these documents online and then upload them, you know, to whatever type of server or system to have. Instead, they want you to come in physically. They want you to mail or they want you to fax. These things seem so outdated to, you know, we're the largest city in Virginia Beach. Why are we so far behind from a technology standpoint? And it's almost scary because while everyone else is moving forward, we appear to be moving back. It's kind of counterproductive. I think we need to embrace technology. Let's exploit it for what it is. Let's, let's, let's take it a step further. How can we get ahead of the competition? That's what we're going to need to do in order to attract and retrain and reach and retain these new businesses that we supposedly want. You know, again, that may have been, may be a bit of a smokescreen. A lot of people say it. We need to attract and retain, and retain business. How are we going to do that? You know what I mean? Where, where are those conversations happening? And who are those conversations happening with? You know what I mean? These are the things that I want to know. This is kind of, this is why I want this seat. There are things that the community needs to know. And I don't feel like an information is being dispersed the way it needs to be. I don't think it's getting into the right hands. Because again, there's so many brilliant minds in Virginia Beach, we just aren't using them. So many brilliant ideas. You know, and I just, it's a shame that we aren't, we aren't, we aren't using these folks to, to the maximum capability.
So with regards to involving citizens, you know, you and I talked about, you know, some of these boards and commissions. You know, the Development Authority is one. A lot of folks don't realize we have a, an authority that makes economic development decisions outside of city council. So how, how would you get the citizens involved on that?
Look, that, that's, that's a matter of, that's a matter of discussing transparency and the need or the lack of it in this case. We, we, we all know and it's no secret and I've, I've called certain groups and, and things of that nature out before. The problem is everyone on these boards, commissions is somewhat connected in some kind of way, which eliminates transparency. You know, there is none, you know. So I guess the question then becomes, how can we create transparency? We've got, we've, we've got to bring some new people in. We've got to involve some more people. It can't be the same people, the same families over and over again. That's what keeps us on this hamster wheel. We're never going to come off if we keep doing the same thing over and over again. And we all know the saying, you know, we do the same thing over and over again expecting a different result is called insanity. Let's not be insane. Let's look at this from a proactive manner. You know, let's look at Virginia Beach like a business, a loving business. How can we nurture our business better? How can we be there for everyone? What are the things, what, what conversations do we need to have to move us forward in a more loving, caring and nurturing way? What can we do? And those are the conversations I want to have. Politics is great. We can talk policy all day long, but it boils down, our biggest investment, and you got to agree, are our citizens. More importantly, our younger citizens, those that aren't 18 yet, that will soon be adults and make an impact. You know, what can we do to make their lives better? You know, life is short, you know, God willing, hopefully I've got another 30 or 40 years left, but we don't, we don't know that. So what can I do to prepare my kids and my grandkids for a better future? What, what, what does Virginia Beach need to look like? What does Virginia Beach need to do to make sure that the lives of those behind us is going to be great? And so when I talk about planning, I'm not talking five and 10 years. For me, that's short sight. It's, it's really short sight. I want to look at 20, 25, 30, 40, 50, 60, you know. So sometimes we hear conversations about land use, going from B2 to B4. You know, while it may not be B4 today, 20, 30, 40 years from now, I'm willing to bet it would be B4. So as we grow, everything else has to grow as well.
That's very insightful because, you know, right now, a lot of big boxes going under. You're seeing a lot of strip malls have, you know, a lot of holes in their shopping centers. You're seeing, you know, older properties, you know, city of Virginia Beach-
Dilapidated.
So you're, you're so right. You got to plan for the future. You got to figure out zoning.
Right, right. Let's, let's look at, you know, sometimes it do us some good to, to look at what other cities are doing. Cities are being productive. I'm, I'm quite sure that some of these dilapidated buildings can be repurposed. I would imagine, I'm no engineer or, or designer. But I'm willing to bet that we can repurpose some of these buildings, you know. We, we don't need to infringe on, on the gray line if we're doing, if we're working on existing infrastructure, you know what I mean? Why not? You know, let's, let's address that. How can we do better at that? I think more importantly, one of the issues for me is, in, in terms of development, is affordable housing. Me, me personally, if we're not, if we're, if we're, if we're taking the citizen's opinion out of this, if we're talking about me and development, I like to see development that includes, well, mixed-use development that includes an affordable housing piece, right? There are a lot of people that make less than $40,000 here. Let's be honest. We're talking teachers, firefighters, our police, our, our military, our single mothers, our single fathers. A lot of these folks make less than $40,000, right? And they're growing, you know. And so I think that it would do us some good to start to include that in a lot of our projects, right? It, it doesn't mean that we're, we're, we're going down. We're going up if you look, look at it that way. You know, there, there, there have been plenty of times in my life and I was, you know, enlisted earlier and I was a single parent. And then after I got out of the military, when I was under $40,000, I would have liked to have lived in a nice place in a nice area. Unfortunately, that's not an option for folks, which is why you see so many people when they transition from the military, they're going elsewhere. They're not staying. They can't afford to live here. But what they would do is if they're using their post-on-11 GI Bill and, and getting some affordable housing, they'd be able to not only get educated here in Virginia Beach or in Virginia, but then they'd stay and work in Virginia also and raise their families, thus increasing the tax base, right? So people in Virginia Beach, we can argue, you'll hear, you'll hear the argument, I don't like it either, raising taxes, raising the taxes. Well, if we're increasing our tax base by retaining folks, then there's no need to raise taxes, you understand? So if you don't accommodate for those that make less than $40,000, then what can we complain about? If we're going to continue to lose people, then just expect the taxes to rise. So again, the question is, how do we retain and bring more folks in? What needs to happen to make that happen? Those are conversations that we need to have, Ron.
With regards to some of the projects that the city is looking at, I mean, are you, you know, there's been a lot of hype, a lot of discussion about Pharrell's Surf Park. You, you think that's a, a good added bonus to their city, you know, and how does that help our city grow?
You know, from, from a cultural standpoint, it sounds good. I'd like to look at that project a bit, a bit more. Right, right now, yeah, definitely. I can, that's something I can get on board with. I'm not a surfing fan, but from my understanding, it'll be an entertainment venue and, and shopping and housing and hotels, I believe, I could be wrong. But it sounds amazing. It sounds like something that we need to bring more folks to the area. Sounds like an attraction. You know, I can't wait to see it. I think they're probably going to do a bang-up job with it.
How do we, how do we find the balance between having a safe community and doing some of the reforms that, you know, a lot of candidates are talking about with regards to law enforcement?
Listen, I've, and, and you're, I know, and we haven't had an opportunity to talk and I apologize. We're going to do that. Hopefully, we can, we can talk more on this call. This is the technology piece I think you can get on board with. We mentioned being behind the power curve in terms of technology, right?
Right.
Public safety and law enforcement. As a former first responder and veteran, there are certain technologies out there that we can implement. Other cities of, other cities of our size and smaller have implemented, specifically artificial intelligence, you know, firearm detection, gunshot detection, facial recognition. There are things or pieces of that that we can implement to ensure our safety without the need of, of arming any and everyone. One thing I'll tell you, again, because I'm transparent, I am a gun owner, but I also believe that everyone that has a gun doesn't necessarily need a gun. Just because you have a gun doesn't mean that you can shoot.
That's fair. Yep.
And so, and this, this is, this is what I, what, this is what I'll say. When we go, and this is about the artificial intelligence I was talking about to improve our public safety. When we go through, those of us from here that have been here for quite a while, we know that when we go through the city of Emporia, there's one thing that we don't do. What's that, Ron? When we go through Emporia, speed, right? And so in Virginia Beach, let's, 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 let's think about Virginia Beach for now. So I want people, when they come to the city of Virginia Beach, I want them to come and have fun. I want them to stay. I want them to come back repeatedly every year, you know, if they don't move here. So if we want to ensure the safety of folks, we want to implement things that, you know, that, that will deter people from, from coming here and thinking that they can get away with causing trouble. Makes sense? So this, this artificial intelligence, imagine if you were able to, to determine where a gunshot came from. And if this piece of technology could track down where this person went. Eventually, there'll be so many people caught, it would, it'd make news and no one would, no one would come and create, cause trouble. You know what I mean? Because you know, if you're going to come and cause trouble, you're going to get caught. It's a matter of how, how fast. And with this piece of technology, it's going to be really quick. You just can't get away. And so that, that creates a safe environment. When we go through Emporia, everyone knows you're going to, it's going to be safe. You know, we're all doing 23 miles per hour and we're going to get out of Emporia and go on about our business. You come to Virginia Beach, I want you to come have fun, do great things. Just don't come and shoot anybody. Don't come and rob anybody. You know, don't burn anything down. Come play nice. Everything will be just fine.
Man, that's a, that's definitely out of box thinking. You know, a lot of folks are thinking traditional, like befriend the police, more community policing.
Right. We need a thousand police officers and we need tanks and we need, no, you don't. In fact, this, this, this piece of technology makes policing easier, right? It, it, and it also negates discrimination. I mean, think about it from that perspective. You know what I mean? This, this, this-
From a budget standpoint too, it saves money.
Absolutely. Are you kidding me? Yeah, you know, now you no longer need three, three cop cars on, on, you know, searching for a vehicle. This technology's already identified where that vehicle is. Send one, call for backup. Now you got another one. Go and pull them over. You know what I mean? And so while we're sorting, while we're sorting our policing and police recruiting out and all those sorts of things, these are things that we can do now, almost immediately. Now, and I'm not, again, I'm not a fan of tax increases, but if a tax, a small taxes increase came along with implementing this piece of technology, that's something I fully get behind because I know it's only going to make us safer. These are things I got no problem getting behind, you know. And I, and I can tell you from, from a first responder standpoint, the last thing I want is a bunch of guns going off at the same time. I can't get in there and save anybody and I can't protect you, you know.
I remember dealing with some of these first responder issues and we, we couldn't, we couldn't figure out how to fund it. So, you know, we looked at cigarette tax, we looked at, you know, all kinds of taxes.
We're going to dive deeper into this, into this AI piece here very soon, but it's really, and it's really inexpensive and, and completely worth it. I mean, if, and this goes bigger than tourism, I absolutely want to make the oceanfront safe. This is the way to do it, but that'll, that will help generate additional revenue. People are going to come here because they know they're going to be safe. If you're looking at some of these blogs, they're saying, oh, you know, I'm not going to Virginia Beach. I hear people are getting shot every day, which isn't the case, by the way. It's, you know, inflated quite a bit, but this will eliminate that. Now, we don't, we don't need to have those conversations. Now, Virginia Beach actually is really number one in safety. We're absolutely safe. Come here, have fun, enjoy yourself. Don't move here. You know what I mean? So, you know, I'm looking forward to that, man. There's so many things that we can do that we just aren't doing it. And I've got, as, as the neighbor, I got to figure out why. Who does the neighbor have to talk to? How many other neighbors, how many other neighbors can I knock on their door and talk to about this? I want to talk to the manager, Ron. I want to talk to the manager.
That's right on. So Brandon, we got a couple of weeks left to the big day. We encourage everyone to go out and vote, get informed on the issues. How do people get in touch with you if they have further questions and want?
Oh man, you know, that's my favorite thing. I get, I get random, I didn't know this about running because I'm the new guy, but I get calls not every day, every other day from just random numbers because my number is public now. And I, I use my, I use my actual real number. So people are just calling my phone and asking questions. I got no problem doing it as long as it's not three o'clock in the morning, obviously, but call me. Facebook, easily accessible. I'm probably, I'm probably the most accessible candidate that, that's out there right now. Message me on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and my, my folks created a TikTok. I haven't used it yet, but I've got a TikTok. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to do dance moves on it or, or what, but I've got one of those. So message me there. And uh, yeah, just call me. I'm, I'm easy to get a hold of.
Well, Brandon Hutchins, your slogan is for a better tomorrow.
Right. Vote, vote for a better tomorrow. Vote for a better tomorrow, Ron. You know, you've, you've got kids, man, so. I'm not doing, I'm not doing this for me, my friend. In some cases, this is, this goes well far beyond my kids, about our grandkids, our great-grandkids and. And things of that nature, man. It's more, we got, we gotta look, we gotta look future. You know, five, ten years is cool. But how are we gonna sustain ourselves for the next thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years from now? What's that gonna look like? Let's start thinking about that. We're talking about development, we're talking about the different benefits we wanna give to our citizens, the things that we can do for small business. Let's think about six years from now. What will help them sixty years from now? Those are the things we need to start doing now.
Brandon, you are uh quite astute on a lot of the issues. Um, you're a great uh leader and a, a former military veteran. I hope the citizens of Virginia Beach get out there and 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 know who you are and consider you for a vote. We, uh, on, on behalf of the Coastal Virginia Chamber of Commerce, we appreciate you participating on our civic engagement platform. We wish you the best of luck, Brandon. God bless you and your family. Take care.
I appreciate you having me. Thanks, Ron.